Chair David Pollak is unable to be with us tonight, so I will be trying to fill his shoes this evening, and I will try to keep us on time as best I can, particularly given that this is our last regularly scheduled meeting of the year. It's not on your agenda this evening, or on the docket this evening, but I do want to take a minute to recognize that we have a new member with us. Maddie Nagler is our new student representative, and I just wanted to take a second on behalf of the school committee to welcome you. And if you'd like to take a minute to tell us a little bit about yourself, that would be great.
Hi, I'm HS, I'm very excited to be here. I'm a reporter at Ag- Thank you. Which is the newspaper at our high school. Yeah, and I'm also on the student government, so I'm very excited to be here.
Great. And we are excited to have you. Thank you so much. Starting with the calendar, as you can see on the screen, you know, as I mentioned, we are nearing the end, so the last few things on the calendar are mostly graduations, which are all very exciting. We have some items on our consent agenda, the past record, an out-of-country trip, as well as two out-of-student trips that we need to move and vote on. Would anyone like to move those? Okay, can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Chalcuff. All those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. And another exciting piece this evening, we have some new principals and an interim principal to welcome here tonight. We're pleased to be joined with by Gentine Jean-Michel from Lawrence, as well as Allison Hart from-- excuse me, Gentine is Runkel, I apologize. First time acting as chair, so I have a few jitters, so I apologize for that. Allison Hart from Lawrence, and Suzie Talukdar, who will be the interim principal at the Driscoll School. I will perhaps turn it over to you, if you want to say a few words, Mr. Bott, about each person, and then perhaps they can take a minute to come to the microphone and tell us a little bit about themselves.
Sure. So I think, as a group, we have three school leaders who are listeners, collaborators, problem solvers, and have incredible strength in building community. I'll let each say a few words about themselves. Gentine, in introductions, her own introductions to the Runkel community, and many subsequent days, Gentine has spent a great deal of time at Runkel, talked about her North Star, what guides her in education, and has begun her work prior to her official start, really listening and understanding and hearing from the community, the broader Runkel community, and plans to come back with a report on what she's heard. Not actual next steps, but a report back on what she has heard, and then to work with the Runkel community on next steps. Ms. Allison Hart is coming to us, and I will not do this justice, but Allison introduced herself to the Lawrence community using artwork, painted her timeline, and very similar to Gentine, in what is her, you know, Gentine and her North Star, what is her guiding light in education. Allison's artistic timeline told a story of who she is as an educator. On a site visit, I will say, to Allison's current school, there was this remarkable moment where there was a group of five of us following Allison, more or less running through the school, checking in with nearly every student on a morning check-in, unfazed by the fact that there was sort of a group following her every move. And the kids looked a little, sort of like, what is happening? Who are these people, you know, following your every move? But really remarkable depth of knowledge of students as individuals, and, again, a collaborator, a listener, and problem solver. Dr. Suzie Talukdar, we know well. I will say that in me asking Dr. Talukdar to consider the interim principalship at Driscoll, there was an almost instant yes, with the appropriate pause to think about moving into the role, but really incredible excitement about the opportunity. As we know from Suzie's over 10 years of work in the public schools of Brookline, we know Suzie to be a listener, a collaborator, a problem solver, and a real team player. And so I'm very excited to present to the committee our three of our incoming principals, and incredibly excited for what they will be able to do with each of their school communities. So I'd ask Gentine to come up to the podium first.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, I'm tall, a little. My name is Gentine Jean-Michel, and I am grateful and honored to be serving as the incoming principal to the John D. Runkel School in Brookline. I was born and raised in Boston. I've been an educator for 22 years, and all 22 of those years have been in Boston. I was a teacher for 11 years. I've taught kindergarten and first grade, and then moved into administration, where I've been a principal for 11 years, from, you know, teaching, excuse me, and leading schools from K to 5. I'm one of 12, so I like to tell people that, because when you go around and you see someone by the last name of LaSette, yes, they're related to me. And my family supports my work in all the schools that I've been in and the work that I've done, so it's a family thing. So you'll be meeting, most likely, my family some way along the lines, in addition to meeting my daughter eventually. The question's been, is she coming to Brookline? And I'm not sure yet, still. I have a daughter, she's in 4th grade in Boston, and this is her first year at her current school. She was in a school that was from K to 3 last year, so this is her first year at her new school, and she's really enjoying it, and I like that, and I want her to continue to enjoy where she is. So I'm kind of swaying to leaving her where she is, so that's the question folks have been asking me. I'm looking forward to joining Runkel, and looking forward to getting to know the community. I know Helen talked about taking me around to the school, I mean, to the community around Runkel, which is something that I want to do. I create these little postcards and say, "Welcome, here I am," and put my picture and some information on it, so I can get to know the neighbors in the area, so we can work together as well. So not only the families that are within the Runkel School, but also families around the surrounding area. So I'm looking forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Any questions from anyone on the school committee?
Everyone's looking at Helen. Go Helen.
Well, no, the problem is, usually, we, in the past, have gotten the resumes, so at least there's something I can pick to ask a question about.
My apologies, Ms. Charlebsky.
Now I have to really struggle. No, I just wanted, I had to do this for them, because they were expecting a question here. What excites you most about Runkel School?
I think what excites me most about actually coming to Brookline, in addition being at Runkel, is that I like growing, and I like the idea of getting to know a whole school community and a whole school district. Like I said, I've been part of Boston for a very long time, and I feel like I know the ins and outs. And I think, as a leader, in the past 11 years, I've spent time in at least three different schools. And so I have the practice of introducing myself again and again, but every single time, I learn something new. And because I'm someone that likes to learn, I think what's exciting to me is that I have an opportunity to get to know a new school community, and have an opportunity to, one, I think the big piece for me is working with the school community that has a large population of students with special needs, because that's where my heart is and a lot of work that I've done. And so I'm looking forward to being able to support not only the RISE program, but all the families and, you know, the programs as well. So there's many things that excite me, but I think the big piece is the learning experience that I will have.
Great. Who would like to go next? Or are there any other questions? Sorry.
All right.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't want to hold it. So, hi, everyone. My name is Allison Hart, and I've been doing our work for 17 years, and I've been a school leader for 10 years in the city of Boston, and began as a 7th grade ELA teacher. And I'm really excited to be a part of this community. I'm also a mom to two kids, one of which is a proud new member of Heath, and did his kindergarten intake this morning. And I just wanted to share this quick story with you, but his birthday's actually today as well, and so I'm excited to go home and have cake. But he, on his way into Heath, actually fell pretty bad, and scraped both of his knees. And so, you know, I'm sure there was a lot of drama in that process, but he actually did really scrape his knees pretty good. And the community, my partner called me and said how amazing it was, because the school nurse was like out there bandaging him up in like two seconds, and I just was really struck by that. And so it reaffirms for me in so many ways that this is such a caring community, and I had the opportunity to be at Lawrence last week for a few days. And the subject of my email was, I think, mind-blown, because it's such a beautiful community of really caring, dedicated educators. And I went to the picnic, and I looked out over the green lawn, and there was patchwork of different quilts and their families sitting there. And it was an almost surreal experience to see that community coming together and to be so strong. And I am so honored to be a part of this work with you.
Any questions from anyone on the committee?
You guys are awful. You know, you could come up with something. They just don't know how to ask questions.
Are you originally from around here?
No.
Oh. Where do you come?
I grew up in Connecticut.
Oh, well, that's New England.
Okay, New England, fair enough. Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's wonderful, and welcome to Brookline.
Thank you so much.
That was a very, not a great question.
That's okay. You could ask me another. You want to like do like a fun one? My favorite color's yellow. I love pizza.
No, more importantly, are you a Red Sox fan?
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. So my mom is, and she's pretty much, like, she's kind of like a fanatic about it, and my son started playing T-ball, and no joke, as soon as I told her that he was playing T-ball, we got an Amazon package two days later with 21 baseballs, batting gloves, and a glove and T-ball stand and bat for my son. And we were like, settle down, like, these are hard baseballs, like, we'll get there. So, so by default, okay, Red Sox? That's good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually don't even need to lift the microphone. It is at perfect height for me. Hi, everyone, good evening. I'm Suzie Talukdar, I'm the director currently, the director of the Metco program. As Andrew mentioned, I've been here for the past, I'm actually finishing my 11th year in the public schools. I know, Barb, doesn't it seem like it was just yesterday? I started my career in education as a middle school teacher, as a 6th grade social studies teacher, just up the street in the Newton Public Schools. And probably about six or seven years into that, an interesting opportunity landed on my lap, and that was to explore the possibility of being the director of the Intercultural Center at Brandeis University in Waltham. And so I leaped, and I went for it, and I did it for four years. And I loved it. I loved it so much, because it allowed me to get to know students, particularly students of color, who I was really passionate about, learning more about and working with, and understanding what allowed them to be successful. But what I realized through that four years is that I really missed being in a K-12 setting. And that's what ultimately brought me back to the K-12. And so I landed here in Brookline as the Metco director, which I've absolutely loved serving as. And so as Andrew mentioned, not too long ago, he approached me about this incredible opportunity, and he is absolutely correct in sharing that. I am thrilled, I'm very excited, because while I've done something I've been very passionate about for the past 11 years, I'm excited to support teaching and learning from a different position in this district, and I really believe that I can have an even greater impact through this sort of role. I'm originally from the greater Boston area, born and raised. I have a son who attends school in Arlington and will likely stay there. It's interesting, being the director of a program that brings schoolchildren out of their home community, and then having to consider that yourself. And for me and my family, we've decided that that's been a good choice for us. I'm just going to try to cut to your questions, Helen, that you've already asked. In terms of the Driscoll community, there are so many things that are happening at Driscoll that I'm excited to support, and also, things that I heard yesterday when I attended the public forum, where community members came out with regard to what they're seeking in the next leader, in terms of someone who can listen very well, and not to suggest my predecessor did not, but someone who, you know, for some consistency in bringing this community together in many different ways. So I'm really, really excited to listen, to reflect, to be respectful, and to collaborate in ways that I've learned to during my time here. Thank you all so much. I'm so honored to be in this role.
Any questions? Oh. Well, someone?
I'm curious, as you transition from your current role to this new role, what new challenge you're most excited about in this new position?
Well, I have to say, I mean, I don't know if it's a challenge, how to describe it exactly, but the learning piece of it, to be honest, you know. I was seeing some of my colleagues that are in the room even right now, and looking at our deputy superintendents, and understanding how administration and finance works exactly in our community, how special ed is functioning at the Driscoll communities. But the piece that I'm most excited about is getting to know the community. Yesterday, I walked through nearly half of the classrooms, so I could say hello, have some face time with our students. The piece that I'm most excited about is getting to know our students, our families, and the faculty there.
So, I didn't get to attend either of your community forums, but I did get to attend yours, because I have a present building, and you did a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And everybody at this table who's been here for a while is so excited, because we've watched your career develop here in the district, from Ms. Talukdar to Dr. Talukdar, you know, just really dominating one program, being the go-to person on so many different committees and district-wide initiatives, and just that overarching has been wonderful to watch.
Thank you.
Delighted that you chose to build your career here, and to brighten others who are developing their careers, that this is really a place to stay, grow, and develop, and sort of progress. So thank you for lending your talents to funding. It's terrific. Your reputation for being a builder proceeds to.
Thank you.
People are very, very excited about among teachers and parents and students, and so, so thank you. We have such high standards for excellence and such a great reputation. I think everyone's excited.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions, sir? Yeah. All right, well, welcome to you all. We're so excited to have you all here. Okay. And you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go, if you have, enjoy birthday cake, or what have you. You know, but don't stay out of politeness, if you need to be somewhere else.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so we no longer have a need for item three on our agenda, and we don't want to jump to public comment too quickly, so we're going to shuffle things around a little bit, and I think we'll move to item five on our agenda, which is the presentation on the results of the 2017-- oh, I'm sorry, we're moving to six, I'm sorry, which are several school committee actions that we have. And the first two have to do with our appointments to the EDCO Collaborative Board of Directors, as well as the Collaborative Advisory Board, a council for EDCO. And I guess, Ms. Charlebsky, is there anything to lead into the votes that we want to say about EDCO, or these particular roles, or?
Well, just to explain to the new members, actually, what EDCO is somewhat, I know that both of the two new members are going to the orientation at EDCO, I think. Oh, you did it already?
I did.
Oh. Are they doing another one? Yeah, okay.
A couple times out there.
Oh, great. Anyways, it's way out in Bedford, which is the hard part of this job, but I must say. We've been an original member of EDCO since its inception, and EDCO is a collaborative that does some special ed classes, a lot of professional development, some public policy work, and is an avenue and an opportunity for us to be able to get together with like communities, mostly west of Boston, and discuss issues that are facing all of us, whether it be budget, whether it be increasing enrollments, MSBA, things like that. Alice Peish, as I mentioned the last time, was there. So EDCO has, unlike some of the other collaboratives where they only have a voting member of the Board of Directors, EDCO has both a voting member of the Board of Directors and a voting advisory council person who goes together, they go together to the meetings, and there's only one vote per district, and sometimes it's a school committee member, sometimes it's a superintendent. When we first began EDCO, there were, the role of the advisory council was for, was for the nonprofit part of EDCO. When the state, we did collaboratives, we no longer could have a nonprofit, it started, let's go back two steps. EDCO was the first collaborative around, and it started as a nonprofit with Boston, Cambridge, Brookline, Newton, and a few other communities. As time went on, we also, once collaboratives became collaboratives, they, there was a public law that began what you could or could not do with collaboratives. And then just recently, maybe about five years ago, it became, the whole law was over, rewritten, not overturned, but rewritten. And so what we used to have of two voting members then became only one voting member. And so what we determined, because we valued both the superintendent and the school committee sitting together and talking about issues, that there would be an advisory council along with the voting member. I think I told you probably more than you wanted to know just now. I did mention last time that Winchester was leaving EDCO, but that our piece would stay the same. And I think that's about it for now.
Well, thank you. Well, Ms. Coyne, can we do this as a single vote, or do we need to do separate votes?
Two separate.
Two separate votes? Okay. Well, we'll start with the EDCO Collaborative Board of Directors nominee, and I would propose, if she is so willing, to have Helen Charlebsky be our appointee to the EDCO Collaborative Board of Directors for 2017, the 2017-2018 school year.
Is it?
Yeah, okay.
That was too quick.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes, I have abstain. I don't know if I can vote.
Want abstention?
Yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you. And similarly, if she's similarly inclined, I would also move that we appoint Helen Charlebsky as--
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a--
He, no. Andrew's the advisory council.
Oh, you are. Oh, I apologize. I apologize.
I can't do both.
Yeah, no, no, my apologies. Then I would, not similarly, I would move that we appoint Andrew Bott as Brookline's EDCO Collaborative Advisory Council member for the 2017-2018 school year.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Just one other thing also that I think you should all be aware of, that Colleen Dolan, who has been the director for the last, I think about eight years or so, maybe 10, will be retiring at the end of this coming year, so there's, there'll be some turnover there. I'll keep you guys informed.
Great, thank you. All right, next on our list is a discussion and possible vote, or proposed vote, with respect to non-aligned personnel salary ranges. Ms. Dunn, do you want to take this one?
So on the, this memo hasn't changed since the last time the committee saw it. Met with, as a follow-up to the questions from the last meeting, I met with Michael Glover and Ben Chang as part of the negotiations committee, and provided them with, I think, probably 18 months to two-year history on bringing non-aligned salary ranges into some formal state. So we reviewed those, and what you have presented to you started with a Collins Report from two years ago, and we went through that and eliminated a step structure, and have put in a range structure to, which is more in keeping with non-aligned pay structures. And there's no increases for any of the staff. All the staff are getting 2% as you voted previously on their FY '17 salaries, and, but really looking at the beginnings of a non-aligned paying classification plan. So that's pretty much kind of where we're at, is to close out something that was started by Bill Upini and picked up by Joe Connolly, picked up by Andrew Bott, picked up, picked up by me, to finish out. So with that, if there are any questions or sort of to-dos that you'd like us to continue working on as we hire a new human resources director, we'll continue to work this structure.
So I wanted to just add to what Ms. Dunn has just reported. So Michael Glover and I had a chance to review kind of the more detailed document, which is about 116 pages, that provided a history of the Collins Report project. As you may recall, about a year ago, or a year and a half ago, we saw that report, and frankly, I thought the Collins Report was not terribly good. Even frankly, it contradict itself within the report, you know, trying to put in more of the, which doesn't fit the non-aligned type of pay structure where there's steps involved. And ultimately, that was streamlined and additional research-- And additional research was done by Director of Human Resource, I believe, and subsequently updated in terms of the comparable communities, in terms of the different types of positions, comparable position. No community have obviously apples and apples all the time. And updated that pay range report as well. So I am very supportive in terms of this proposal. It provides guidance, as well as enough flexibility for the senior staff when they are competing for, you know, for talented people within the system. And I think ultimately, the market, if you will, will tell us if we remain competitive in our pay bands. You know, obviously, if we're not, we need to know that. But the way it currently stands, I think it's a terrific way to move forward.
Ms. Dikoff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm a little confused. I thought the last time we talked about this, the full committee was going to have access to the benchmarked information. I understand it was going to be discussed in negotiations as a first pass, but I thought there were enough people who... I'll just put myself in this category, but I thought there were enough people who had raised not questions and problems, but questions, just questions, that we were going to see before asking for a vote. So did I miss that?
I guess I don't remember that. I thought ultimately, I thought it was punted to either finance or negotiations.
It was punted, and I think it's yes and yes.
So the... I'm happy to provide the committee members with the 115 pages we put together in the PDF. That's...
Yeah, I'm sure that's... At least I asked in the last meeting. I didn't realize it was going to discuss negotiations and then not provided to the committee before a vote. I thought that was more of a first pass. So if I'm the only person with that understanding, then I will own that. But if I'm not the only person with that understanding, we should figure out what to do.
So perhaps, perhaps we can get that information to all of the committee members. I guess the question would be, is there additional information other than that? We think and I know, not having looked at it, it's hard to answer that question.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I feel like we've had this conversation like three or four times, though.
No.
And so I do, I don't feel comfortable voting on this, but I'm happy to abstain and let everybody else vote if everyone else feels comfortable. I just, that's where I am.
If others have opinions, that's, you know, certainly feel free to voice them. I, my thinking is perhaps, is this something that we could do in the workshop after everyone's had an opportunity to take a look at the full report?
That was going to be my suggestion, that everybody's gotten their raise, their 2% COLA. So that's, I think, the most important part. And the rest of this was for us to understand and agree to whatever's in here. And I actually did hear Ms. Dikoff say, or request comparables. So I think it would be a good idea to vote it in July.
Okay.
Can I just ask? Is there any... So I know that you all have been eager for us to vote this. Is there anything, by deferring it, is there anything that we're preventing you from being able to move forward on?
We're just entering a hiring season without pay structures or pay bands and the superintendent not having an approved pay band for certain positions. So that's a technicality at this point. When we start actually paying people, we need to have pay bands done. So, and I guess I want to make sure that people are clear that the comparisons are based on the work that was done over the last 18 months. They have not been updated. So some of the, so some of the information was already presented to the committee. It's just now in a compilation of a number of pages. So I'll forward the PDF this evening, and you can take a look at it. I guess I would like to know from or through the chair to know if there's a desire of committee members to have that updated. We would be updating those bands anyway, those pay ranges anyway, as part of the FY '19 budget process to make sure they're in line. And that would be an annual occurrence, because this is an annual group of employees as opposed to three, a three-year contract, where we would do that towards the end of the contract to compare the paid salaries. So there is an annual... What I'm trying to build is an actual annual review as part of the budget process for the, for this particular group of employees until we get to a point where we put them into a three-year sort of cycle as the rest of our bargaining units. So I guess I want to make sure that people are clear that there's a timestamp on when those comparisons were done and that they are not within the last six months as we were finishing up negotiations.
I think to the extent that we can get those updated, that would be, that would be great, if we can do so in a manner that still allows us to bring it to...
For July 10th, it won't, it can't happen.
Can't happen.
I don't have the bandwidth to happen. I'm losing HR director and I'm...
For the next budget.
Then it's got to be for the next...
For the next budget cycle, for FY '19 as part of the budget building process. Absolutely, it can get done.
So from a practicality standpoint, it doesn't mean that you cannot use that as a guide when you're hiring. So if that's the case, you know, let's wait until the workshop so everybody have a chance to digest the details.
Anyone else? All right, very good. All right. And we have a proposed vote to accept a gift of up to $5,000 from the Driscoll Parent Teacher Organization for a Gaga pit on the Driscoll School grounds. I have to admit, I have no idea what a Gaga pit is. Does anyone know what a Gaga pit is?
It's a great game. It's a hexagon or octagon-shaped pit.
I was just going to punt to you for you to give the explanation.
That you play inside of, there's walls, and it's... The ball gets bounced around the base, and you have to jump it. And if the ball hits your feet, you're out. And it's just non-stop movement. And it's, the kids have a blast with it. It's a fantastic game.
So we have a precedent on this at another school?
Yeah, so I can share a few details. So the last summer, a gift was accepted at Heath School from the PTO to purchase the pit materials, the additional boards, the rubber mat system. And then Parks and Open Space installed it and has, over the course of the year, checked on maintenance. It had to be cleaned out once because of leaf material getting into the foam pad. It's a foam pad on the inside of the pit. And this proposed gift, the proposal before the committee to accept this gift, is a similar partnership between the Driscoll PTO and Parks and Open Space. You can again see the cost estimate. If you turn to the back page of the memo from Matt Gillis, you see the letter from the, one of the Driscoll PTO co-chairs with the request for the, to accept the gift up to $5,000. The following page is a map. The PTO has worked with Aaron Gallantine to identify the spot for the pit. You can see the star, or sort of the asterix, near the school building. And that's an area where the installation will not interfere with plowing any of the existing areas that are plowed during snowstorms. So it's clear of that. So we have Park and Open Space endorsement of that. And then the final page is a picture of what is in space now. And so the Gaga pit would go... The stroller is not a permanent fixture. The Gaga pit would go in that, in that circular space. So that is the request before the committee. Because it's a gift that becomes permanent, all gifts should be accepted by the school committee. It's hard to remove a Gaga pit. So it is important that the committee consider it. But again, this is a partnership between PTO and Parks and Open Space that has a precedent.
Okay, great. Well, this is, this is a very exciting gift. And we're very thankful to the Driscoll PTO for making it available to us. And with that, I will move that the school committee accept the gift of the Gaga ball pit donated from the Driscoll School PTO to be located at the Driscoll School as proposed in the documents that are in the packet. Okay, any further discussion?
Can I ask a couple of quick questions?
Absolutely.
And so two, one question is, what isn't drawn on the map is the handicap accessible ramp, which is kind of where it says, whatever it says, drop shot, C, SP 42. Like where that was, that's where the ramp is. So I'm assuming that it not in any way interfere with the access to the ramp? I don't know how far out Gaga is going to come.
I would assume so.
Okay.
We, Matt Gillis, can work closely with Aaron Gallantine to make sure that that's the case. I would assume, based on their Parks and Open Space approval,
Okay.
that that has been considered. But we will, we will make sure that that has been fully taken into account.
Okay, and the only other thing that I would ask, is there any issue with noise level directly into the classroom? Or what used to be the music room, it changes every year. But sometimes it's the music room. That big thing, what says curb schedule? That's kind of being used for music, I think. So is there any issue with noise level having... Because right now, not our utilized space, it's sort of crappy, as you can see. It's like broken, like concrete and stuff. So no one's going to care that it's gone, but it's right next to the music room.
I will find out the answer, but I'm pretty sure that with Heidi's, Cook's input on this, Aaron's input, Matt's input, the PTO's input, that somebody's probably thought about that. But I will confirm that somebody really did think about that.
Okay. Thank you. It's very exciting. I know the kids are excited about, there's a rumor, and they're very excited.
Ms. Scott?
As I look at this picture on the last page, I'm wondering if there will be some repair work done on this wall. It looks as if a whole section of the stone where kids sit is missing. And the tile work is also there. And it seems, it would be nice to have that fixed when this goes in. So it doesn't look like it's just been put in a, sort of a broken space.
We certainly can check on the plans. There have been, repair work has been happening around town in different areas that I have seen as I've traveled to schools, concrete repair. So I don't know the answer. But Ms. Dunn, Mr. Gillis, and I will work together to get that answer for you.
Whether it comes down entirely, because Gaga pit has a high wall. So you would...
The wall may actually mask, maybe put inside the, inside the exterior wall, the wall that exists.
We would see that now, in either direction.
I'm not sure they would take it down. They may actually just put the wall in front of it.
But if you can see it, it's rather unsightly.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous? Thank you. Thank you again to the Driscoll School PTO. All right, Nick?
Any questions?
Absolutely.
Do you want to write a thank you note or something? What do we do when we get the PTO? Do you have some kind of...
One thing, though, that I would like to request is when things like this come up, it's usually a good idea, because of these other questions that come up, to bring it to capital first when there's something that has to do with a change in the playground or whatever else that we might have to vote on. So just as a FYI, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Next up on the docket is the superintendent's report.
So I will start with an update that is not in my updates. Back to Mr. Glover announcing that the executive session that was proposed for 6/20 being canceled. I'm pleased to say that earlier today, Ms. Wender Schubow and I and a team of folks were able to resolve a longstanding grievance. I think we determined going back to 2012 or 2013 in different iterations, and we were able to resolve it successfully today. So excited about that. And just wanted to update the committee on that being removed from the docket. So, thank you. So the report in front of you, as you know from earlier tonight on June 6...
I'm going to go over this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I, oh. On June 6, I had the pleasure of announcing Dr. Susie Tluukdar as interim principal of Driscoll School. And as we spoke of earlier tonight, Dr. Tluukdar has been an integral member of Brookline's administrative team for 11 years as the K-12 director of Edco programs. And I'm confident that Driscoll will benefit greatly from her skills and experience in the upcoming year. I want to share with the committee, this, two Saturdays ago, I had the privilege of participating in my first graduation ceremony, two Sundays ago, sorry. My first graduation ceremony at Brookline High School on Sunday, June 4. From my vantage point on the stage, I was able to see out the sea of optimistic faces in the class of 2017. It was really remarkable. And I will say, for those of you who have never been on the stage, the range of emotions that students show as they're coming across the stage, it's really, it just, it shows the deep, deep connections that students have with their peers, with their teachers, with members of the BHS community and the Brookline community. It was really, it was remarkable. And as always, the administrative team at Brookline High works tirelessly to ensure the day proceeded without a hitch. Mother Nature helped in that as well. It really was an amazing day. I want to thank Sam Kennedy, 1991 graduate of Brookline High School and the current president of the Boston Red Sox, who gave the keynote speech. His remarks were genuine and hopeful. He talked about his own experience playing baseball at the high school, if you did not hear his speech, and how that informed his work as he entered into professional baseball. At the end of his speech, after giving wisdom and advice, he also gave each graduate two tickets to a Red Sox game. That was, graduates were truly ecstatic. And the entire senior class of BHS, graduating senior class, along with a friend for each graduate, attended last Sunday's game against the Detroit Tigers. Unfortunately, the Red Sox lost 8-3, which I did not put in my superintendent report, but is now on TV. I also had the opportunity and the pleasure of attending the scholarship breakfast Sunday morning. Scholarship recipients were joined by families and sponsors of the individual scholarships. It was a sunny morning in the quad. And under really just the remarkable leadership of Scott Bouchard, the dean, BHS dean of students and scholarship chair, and Linda Wentzle, the BHS registrar and scholarship coordinator, the high school awarded over $280,000 in scholarships to worthy and appreciative seniors. Two of the recipients, the two recipients of Boston University's full scholarship were announced, along with the two Northeastern University half scholarships. Fallon Ambulance also had, for the first time, two scholarships for EMT training. The free, full tuition for the EMT course was given to two recipients. So hopefully the first, very grateful for Fallon for offering that, and hopefully the first in what will be many, many years to come. For those of you who did not know, Sam Kennedy was not the only famous BHS alum to visit campus. An overflow crowd greeted BHS alumnus Nick Walker, class of 2016, Monday, June 12, 2006, sorry, 2006, in the Robert Stubbs Auditorium. Nick is a current Hamilton cast member, and he returned to Brookline to share his stories and insights about life in the arts. And I want to share a brief excerpt of how Nick described the value of his performing arts experience at BHS. Quote, "I cannot begin to tell you how deeply each of the Brookline Performing Arts Department shaped my drive, my artistic comprehension, and style. They taught me the importance of finding my own voice instead of chasing others, of working within the community to serve the community. Every play or concert I did was a free masterclass in critical thinking and expression. And each teacher left their indelible mark on me in ways I am still discovering today. Couldn't capture better the power of the performing arts team at BHS." As the committee knows, on Wednesday, June 7, Dr. Asa Savellias, principal of Heath School, announced to the Heath community that he's transgender. The, following this announcement, Dr. Savellias received tremendous support from Heath educators, educators across Brookline and well beyond. It was really a remarkable level of support for an individual and for a community. It was really, really special. As I said in my letter to the Heath community, which is attached to the end of this report, the Brookline Public Schools is and will remain a community that supports and... "The Brookline Public Schools is and will remain a community that supports and embraces everyone. This has been our longstanding core value, and a value that we are more resolute than ever to uphold and celebrate." Today, I attended a reception at the Great Hall at the Massachusetts State House honoring, among others, Baker School first grade teacher Laura Richardson. Ms. Richardson is a finalist for the 2016, was a finalist for the 2016 Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. What I did not include is, Ms. Richardson does amazing things with her class, from programming, robotics, and on three separate occasions, when I was visiting Baker, I was able to engage and try my own hand at programming robots. And the first, well, actually, all three times, the first graders were far superior at it than I was. I, I actually, one of my robots almost drove off the table, so I was, I was moved to the floor. The ceremony was hosted by the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education, Mitchell Chester, who was unable today, and Deputy Commissioner led the ceremony, and celebrated the achievements of 14 educators across the Commonwealth. It was really a privilege to attend and support Laura, and I wish her, I want to say congratulations to her in this honor. I also want to share that fifth grader, Pierce fifth grader Graham Horowitz, Graham Horowitz from Ms. Wu Master's class was chosen as Brookline's Police Chief for a Day in the First Annual Police Chief for a Day Essay Contest. The prompt was, "If you were a police chief, what would you do to make Brookline safer?" Graham's essay was chosen from over 80 entries, and on June 8th, Graham was sworn in as Police Chief in the, the theater area outside of Pierce. He then went and led roll call over at the station, went on patrol, and ended his day with a lunch, celebrating his, his winning essay at the police station with a number of police officers and town officials in attendance. I'll also add that Graham got his own Brookline Police uniform, Chief Uniform, that is his to keep. It was a really, it was, it was a wonderful day. Graham had a lot of stories, and he noted that when he was learning how to use the speed gun, cars just slowed down when they saw him. On June 6th, BHS Headmaster Anthony Meyer and I participated in the annual Steps to Success Recognition Ceremony at the Teen Center, a ceremony that recognizes students at each grade level of steps to success with a special recognition for high school seniors. It was my pleasure to offer congratulations and best wishes. As a part of that ceremony, Steps to Success grants the annual Hats Off Award, recognizing someone who's gone above and beyond, on behalf of Steps and its students. This year, the Hats Off Award was presented to Cara Lopez, Guidance Counselor in the BHS Alternative Choices in Education, or ACE program. According to Steps, Cara, quote, "Cara works tirelessly with her students to help them achieve their high school and post-secondary goals. We're thrilled to have Cara working on behalf of educational equity for all of our students." And for anyone who knows Cara, you know that this was an honor very well deserved, and it was, it was great to be able to celebrate with Cara and with all of the student recipients. Last week, Brookline Community Mental Health Center had their annual fundraiser at Lars Anderson Auto Museum. I joined committee members, Ms. Charlepski and Ms. Scotto, at the ceremony, celebrating all that the Brookline Community Mental Health does, as well as the leadership of Dr. Cindy Price, who is retiring as the Executive Director of the Brookline Center after 38 years of service. We in the public schools of Brookline are fortunate to be able to partner with the Brookline Mental Health Center to bring important services to our students in need. Deputy Superintendent Nicole Gittens and I attended the Brookline Education Foundation's Year-End Board Meeting on the evening of Monday, June 12th, at the home of Jennifer Nadelson. It was a casual event to reflect on the achievements of the past year while looking ahead to the exciting plans that are a part of our continued and successful partnership. I want to recognize that it was, this is Ian Rothman's last week as President of the Board. He has capably led the BEF for the past two years, and I want to welcome incoming BEF President Emily Dolbear. And I want to thank the Brookline Education Foundation for what they do each and every year, supporting educators, innovation, and so much directly in all of our schools. It is really, it's a very special partnership, and it's one of the many things that make Brookline so, so special and unique. And lastly, I want to share that this morning, I stopped by the annual Devotion School Volunteer Breakfast, hosted at the home of PTO Co-President Charla Whitley. As you know, Brookline is fortunate to have scores of committed parent volunteers who partner with us to make our schools the vibrant educational communities that they are. The enthusiastic and passionate efforts of PTO volunteers across all of our schools play a key role in bringing our schools to life. It was a pleasure to attend the devotion volunteer breakfast with everyone today. Thank you.
I, I'm just curious if you know what Graham Horowitz's suggestions were about how to make Brookline safer?
I talked with him about it, and I don't remember. So I will get that to you.
You know what would be great, though, if it's, if it's okay with Graham, to share his essay with us?
Yeah.
I just wanted to say too, that I had the pleasure of attending the talk on Monday night. Helen Charlepski was also there with, when Nick Walker came and spoke at the high school. And, you know, I think that I am, as a Brookline parent and also a member of the school committee, you have just really wonderful opportunities throughout the year to see how, you know, just what an amazing community we have, and how there's not, not only a lot of, just, it's just wonderful to see so many people kind of come up from the Brookline system, go out and do amazing and wonderful things, and then come back and share them with the community. And I think that that was one, what I was thinking as I was sitting there on Monday night, and I was there with my almost 10-year-old daughter, who, when we went and saw Matilda on Broadway this past year, decided that she would like to, to be on Broadway perhaps one year, in the future. And so she was very inspired by, by seeing him speak and just hearing, you know, I think that what was, was so wonderful about having someone who was so relatable to the kids is that he was able to talk about his vulnerabilities and things that he has kind of struggled with and learned from throughout the last 10 years or so since he's graduated. And to sit and see her be so inspired from that, I think was just, just a real wonderful opportunity, and, and I, I think that it was just amazing that we have those opportunities. And I know that there were a lot of groups at the Brookline High School who made that happen, and just tremendous kudos to them to bringing him back to come and speak to the students.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Bott, for that, for that report. I'm debating whether to begin two minutes early on public comment. Suppose we can, without offending anyone. Ms. Coyne, has anyone signed up for public comment? That's true. Okay, no one has signed up for public comment? Is there anyone in the room who would like to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will, we will move on. If anyone walks in in the next few minutes, we will, and wants to make public comment, we will certainly allow them to do so, since we started a little bit early. Let's see, should we move on, write in a subcommittee report, or should we go?
Either one.
Well, if, if Ms. Cooley's ready, perhaps we can start with her, so that she can finish and be on with her evening. So we have a presentation on the results of the 2017 Family Feedback Survey.
Oh, that does not look great. Okay. Okay. So thanks, everyone, for having me back. Erin Cooley, I am the Director of Data Analysis and Information Management for the district. When we met a couple of weeks ago, or I guess two sessions ago, we talked to you about the staff results for the feedback survey. So we're here today to talk about the results from the family survey. We're gonna talk in, similar to the staff survey, we will talk about the aggregate results for the district, the difference being, for the family results, we have broken that data up by what I'm gonna call grade spans, I guess, throughout the presentation. So the BEEP schools, the K-8 schools, and then the high school. This is the same slide that we presented to you last time, so just quickly, as an overview, I'm gonna run through these next couple of slides fairly quick, because you've seen them before. We do give two different types, or really three different types of surveys, one for school staff, one for district staff, and one for families. We do this to gather feedback from our most important stakeholder groups, so that schools can reflect on areas of strength and areas for improvement, based on those responses. This year, we contracted with Panorama Education, so they were our partner in this work again. Both the family and staff survey was done online for families. That survey was available in all of the translations, or the translated languages that we have. We worked with the ELL department to get those completed. And the family survey, in terms of the administration window this year, we sent that out right after February vacation, and that was open for about three, three and a half weeks. So same thing as the last time. Each survey is sort of reported in what we're gonna call categories, or topic areas, for the family survey in particular, that we'll talk about today. Those categories range between five and seven, so the BEEP survey has five different topic or category areas, and the K-8 and the high school have seven. All of the results that we will share with you, that get shared to school leaders, will be shared by topic area, so in summary, by that area, and also by individual item or individual question. And the way that these responses are reported are in percent favorable, so that's a language that you should be familiar with from our last presentation as well. And essentially, what that means is that it's an indication of the percentage of respondents who answered positively to a question. So if you're thinking about a scale of one to five, that would be a four or a five on that scale. The example that I gave you there, the question being, "How strong is this school's sense of community?", if a respondent answered extremely strong or quite strong, that would be put into the favorable category. So I'm just gonna quickly go over those response rates. We saw these again last time as well. So the staff response rate was 58%. In terms of that range for schools, we had between 49 and 75% of schools' staff responding in that range. For families, the average response rate was 26%, with the school base range being 20 to 32%. One of the pieces of information that, or questions, I guess, that you had for us the last time was, "What does that mean? Is that a good response rate for both of these survey types?" We spoke with our partner, our Panorama, and they actually said that the family survey for the districts that they work in, above average is 25 to 30% in terms of response rate, so we are hitting, hitting that. And then for the staff, they said it's actually 80 to 90%. A couple of pieces of information they did tell us was that a lot of the schools they work in either make it mandatory for staff to fill out the survey, or they, schools give staff specific time during faculty meetings, or something like that, to complete the survey. So that's why they indicated, or that's why they believed those response rates are so high for a lot of the communities that they work in. So here are our staff survey results. Again, you saw these last time. All of those items on the left column are going to be the different categories or topic areas. These are just ordered alphabetically. To highlight, again, last time we met, we talked about educating all students, staff and family relationships being high, even staff leadership relationships being high. We also talked about feedback and professional learning being a little bit lower in terms of that percent favorable. Ms. Gittens also talked to you about things that we're working on this year and have been working on throughout the year in those two areas. So we'll be looking to see if those change in our next iteration, next year. These are the results from the district staff. So as I mentioned earlier, we give basically three types of surveys, one for staff, one for families, and one for district staff. So district staff only answer questions about the district climate, so you saw those results the last time as well. So let's get into our family survey results. So I just want to talk a little bit about how we've organized this presentation, similar to the last time where we talked about the staff results. We will go over the aggregate results for all of those topic areas. Then we will highlight some areas of strength, one area of strength, one area for improvement for each of the survey, and go into an individual question item in those particular areas. We'll talk about BEEP, K-8, and the high school. We will also show you some results from our district climate topic area, and at the end, speak a little bit about some interesting results, maybe some questions that we have been considering as we looked through some of the results from this family survey. And as always, we'll end with some next steps. So here is, here are our results from our family survey by topic area. Again, those topics are listed on the left in alphabetical order, the percent favorable in the next three columns. What I did want to highlight for you is that if you look at sort of the, the far right column where change is listed from the previous iteration of the survey, you see a lot of pluses, I guess, in those particular cells. So 13 out of 17 of the areas were actually increasing our percent favorable from the last iteration, or last year's survey results that were given to families. Obviously, some of those numbers are, you know, plus 2%, so maybe not necessarily meaningful, but you see things like plus 13, plus 21, plus 34. Those are some of the pieces of information, and some of the questions that we'll dig into throughout the rest of the presentation. So here's our results for BEEP families. You'll see here, these are our overall results, so those five different topic or category areas. We will talk about district climate for all three of the grade spans, so throughout the rest of the presentation, when we're in each grade level, I'm gonna sort of skip over that. But you'll see here for BEEP, pretty high across the board, school fit, school leadership, school climate, ranging from 88 to 95% favorable. The area of strength that we wanted to highlight for you all is the school leadership category or topic area. 95% of family members are responding favorably to the questions, or to the overall questions in that category. So we also have a sample of questions there for you. So the questions that they're asking, "How positive is the tone that program leaders set for the culture of BEEP? How effectively do BEEP's leaders and teachers communicate important information to families?" And this number is sort of just reaffirming what the districts, or the district sense of BEEP's leadership, right there. How effective they are, how thoughtful they are. As we move into a particular question in this category, "How effectively do BEEP's leaders and teachers communicate important information to family?", you see a similar result, right, that 91% favorable. There's also been a 10 percentage point increase from the last survey, so 81 already was high last year. They're doing some things, obviously, in that particular grade span, where parents are feeling like the communication that they're getting is very effective and helpful and informative to them. It was really difficult for us to sort of pick an area of improvement, everything, all of those topic areas in, in the BEEP school, or BEEP schools, were fairly high, but family engagement was the lowest, if you want to call 77% low. Those samples of questions there that you see in the past year, "How often have you visited your child's school? How easy is it for you to talk or meet with your child's teachers? What extent are parents and guardians given the opportunity to be meaningfully involved at BEEP?" The question that we wanted to pull out for you was actually the lowest in terms of percent favorable, when we look at all of those questions. percent favorable when we look at all of those questions in this particular category. So that is, how relevant have the topics of BEEP's parent support groups, workshops, and information sessions been to your needs and/or your interests? So only 52% of families are responding favorably to that particular question. And we basically thought this would be really good feedback for BEEP staff to look at this particular question as they're thinking about planning for their upcoming year in these support groups, in these workshops, just being really mindful, maybe talking to families, seeing what they are actually interested in learning about. That's why we pulled out this particular question. So now we're going to move on to the results for our K-8 schools. Here, you'll see the responses, or the average responses for all of the different topic areas. There are seven there. You don't see that change under the school safety area because we didn't actually have the same questions in that particular category last year, so that's why you don't see that change there. Pretty consistent in terms of the responses that we received last year. Again, I'll talk about that district climate piece a little bit later. So changes aren't necessarily noteworthy in terms of from last year to this year, but we do have school fit, school leadership, school climate, a little bit higher here.
Do, if we ask from Panorama, would we be able to see comparable other district longitudinal information? And really understand if there are, again, surveys has its limitations, but why certain district say outperform us in certain areas? For example, communication or family engagement, and they've been able to consistently say do better than what we're doing, and be able to say learn from them?
I think that would depend on the district, right? Whether they would allow Panorama to share that information with us. I will say that when we meet with them, they give us a lot of different strategies for improving these results. So they can say, you know, in this particular topic area, say communications, we've seen this work really effectively at schools. So they can give us those strategies. We can certainly, you know, ask and see what some average, I guess, results are for the different areas. I'm not sure they would say, you know, in Newton, this is the rate.
Right, so I think one way to mitigate that is you just disguise it, meaning that you don't, you say District A, you wouldn't know who it is, because that obviously would be quite helpful.
Yep. Great, thanks.
You were talking about kind of giving the feedback to the BEEP program on certain things. Do you do the same for the K-8 schools? Do you provide this overarching, the overarching results? Or do you, how is it utilized? Do we also drill down with each of the schools and say, you know, at this school, the family engagement is 22%, and another school, it's, you know, 60%? And do we look at it like that, or do we use this data that we get as more kind of across the board?
Yeah, so we're presenting it to you, obviously, in aggregate. Every principal, every school leader gets a report for their particular school, and they are sharing that with their staff. I think we talked about last time, they're making the decision whether or not to share that with their staff before the end of this year and/or sometime in the summer before the beginning of next year. We certainly look across the different schools, you know, centrally to see if there are outliers, and would say, you know, your communication topic area is really high, what did you do this year that you think made that change? But yeah, school leaders have basically the same, every single question, it looks exactly like this, and then they have the aggregate results too. So they're able to see all of the different response rates for their school only at this point, but we do make those, we will make those reports public as well.
It would show for Driscoll, these are the numbers, and here is what it is for District Y.
Yep, and it will compare to the district as well for them.
Related question. So in looking at the K through eight aggregate results, how consistent are these results from school to school? Or is, are there outliers in several of these areas such that this may or may not actually tell us the story that we need to hear?
Yeah, so I think that these are, I mean, I think that these are fairly consistent from school to school. I don't have, you know, off the top of my head, I can't tell you that, you know, school climate looks drastically, drastically different in one or two different schools. That's something we can look at, if you're interested in. Any other question? Great. Okay, so it's here. Okay, so the area of strength that we are going to talk a little bit more about is, in the K-8 grade span, is school climate. So the questions here, how strong is the school's sense of community? To what extent is your child engaged in appropriately challenging levels of academics? How much does this school value the diversity of students' backgrounds? We chose to highlight this, one, because 72% favorable is high, but also because school climate, we feel is really a necessary foundation for schools for good learning to happen. If you don't have a climate where students feel safe, if you don't have a climate where students are engaged, then good, it's just more challenging for good learning to happen. And I think this is showing that in our K-8 schools, we have that strong foundation of school climate. So when we dig into a particular question here, we're going to look at how well do administrators and teachers at the school create a school environment that helps students learn? So 81% of respondents are saying that administrators and teachers do quite too extremely well at creating these environments that help students learn. I think this is just a good example of what a piece of good climate looks like. As we move into our area for improvement, 44% responding favorably to that communications topic area for the K-8 schools. So some of those questions, what would be the best way for the school or district to stay in communication with you? How timely is the feedback that teachers at the school provide students about their learning? To what extent are you using the parent portal? So we chose to highlight this for you, less than half of the respondents are answering favorably to these questions. This is obviously an area for improvement. If you remember the staff survey results from last time, we actually found that the school staff, the communications percent favorable was a little bit higher than the district staff. So we're seeing communications to families and in district staff being an area for improvement throughout the entire district. As we move into the question that we're going to highlight for you, to what extent do you know how your child is doing in school before you receive his or her report card? 48% of families are responding, responding favorably to this, so 48% are saying they know quite a bit, or they know well how their children are doing before their report card is given to them. One of the things that we wanted to point out here is that K-5, excuse me, K-5 families are receiving those report cards, or some type of report card, two times a year, the, you know, the district report card. Obviously, teachers may be doing something different in their classroom. Six to eight families are actually receiving those report cards, progress reports, about eight times a year, between that progress report and the report card. So it might be interesting for us to pull out a little bit more from this question, if we can, around like what grade levels of families are maybe pulling this down.
So this is, I think, one great area that having other district data, especially on communications, right, would really provide, I think, some substance and comparability, just because I am assuming there is a certain level of selection bias going on here in a sense that the people that answers these questionnaires tend to be the one that's also probably reading and looking at every single one that comes, and in their eyes, there's never sufficient enough information coming to them. So this is where comparing it to other comparable districts give you a sense that, okay, realistically, how much higher could you push this thing? Obviously, the better, higher the better.
Yep. That's a great point, and I think we were able to do that with the response rates, right? So if we just looked at 26% being the response rate for families, you might think that's really low, but we found out through some investigation that's actually above average. We'll talk a little bit more, I think, about one of the pieces you're getting at, one a little bit further in the presentation too, where things look low, but is that actually right, that kind of thing?
Ms. Fetterfield, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. So under your sample of questions, first one says, what would be the best way for the school slash district to stay in communication with you? So that's actually an open-ended question.
There's actually those choices, but yeah, there's a selection of choices.
So there was a selection like?
Email.
Oh, okay. So we don't have that information?
We do, yes, yeah. It doesn't get calculated into this responded favorably percentage, because who says what's better, email versus?
You had this, a bunch of questions that were more open-ended or had choices, that it wasn't just agree and disagree.
Yeah, so the scale, actually, we talked about this the last time. So it's not just a one through five, and it's not that normal, or what you consider normal Likert scale, where it's strongly disagree to strongly agree. The way that Panorama sets up their answer choices is that they actually use the text of the question in the answer choice. So they feel like that gives them, and they've done some research, that gives them a little bit more accurate responses, as opposed to just saying strongly disagree versus disagree. So as we move into, oh, one more thing I wanted to say, actually, about this communications piece, is that, so Driscoll and Pierce are using, teachers are using a program called Canvas, that actually students are almost like interacting with their teachers. I believe there's discussions, you can post assignments on there. And so while that's not necessarily the families interacting with the teachers, potentially, if families have a little bit more information about what Canvas is and what it can provide for students, they may be asking, you know, their child, you know, did you get any assignments from so-and-so teacher, or, you know, what did she grade you on on this?
So as the, probably the only parent who's got a BHS students right now, when I saw that, I was blown away. I loved it because granted, not every single teacher's on it, but what you're able to do basically is see the progression of your child's work in the grades and the commentary. So it is truly real time in terms of, you know, how they're doing, if the teacher is obviously using it the right way and providing timely updates. So this is a great system.
Yeah, next year, Lawrence and his teachers will be using it as well. So as we move on to the results for our high school, here are your overall results in the seven different category areas, highlighting school climate, school fit, school leadership, as those being high in terms of percent favorable, also being school leadership in particular, and communications, and school climate actually having enough of an increase to be significant from last year. We chose to highlight school leadership here, some of the questions that families are asked on this particular topic area. How clearly do BHS leaders identify their goals for the school? How positive is the tone that the school leaders set for the culture of the high school? How effective is their leadership in promoting learning and growth in all students? And you see that 70% is, you know, significantly high, and then you also see that increase from last year as well, being high. As we move into the question that we're going to highlight, how positive is the tone that the school leaders set for the culture of BHS? This actually made me think of this week, Lucy West, who is a master coach for Metamorphous Teaching and Learning. She was here this week, meeting with our coordinators and some of our specialists, and I was lucky enough to go to about an hour of one of her sessions, and she talked a lot about culture. She actually referenced this quote, saying, "Culture eats strategy for breakfast," and she had like pancakes, the whole picture. But it, she basically just reaffirmed that if culture, if the culture isn't strong, then other work can't happen, right? So it's pretty positive that the culture for BHS is growing in a positive way, and I think that the tone that's being set here, again, is increasing, and it's going to allow for other, you know, other things to happen, or other changes to happen at the school, other work to happen, really. So as we move into the area for improvement at the high school, this is going to be school safety. So the two questions in that particular area, if a student is bullied at BHS, how easy is it for him or her to get help from an adult? And how likely is it that someone from BHS will bully your child online? Again, there's no change because we didn't actually have the same questions on this particular portion of the survey last year. We do know that Mr. Meyer is already in discussion with his staff, not only about all of these results, but about this one in particular. So basically, around half of families are, you know, indicating that it isn't easy for their child to get an adult, if they, or go to an adult if they have a problem. So that's actually the question that we're going to highlight. If a student is bullied, how easy is it for him or her to get help from an adult? Again, that 56% favorable is essentially saying that families indicate it's quite too, only 56% are indicating that it's quite too extremely easy for students being bullied to get help from an adult. The one thing that we wanted to point out here is that these are...
I just had another question about the school's safety.
Oh, sure.
Were there any, besides bullying, were there other safety issues that were brought up?
So those are the only two questions that are brought up in that particular category. What I was going to just say, actually, is that, no, that's okay, is that the students actually take two types of bullying and/or health surveys throughout the year, one being the YRBS, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and the second being the OVEAS Bullying Survey. The YRBS, every student in BHS takes it. The OBQ is just a sampling of students in nine through 12. Those are much longer surveys, get into much more detail about safety, not only, you know, in areas of physical safety, but mental and other health-related questions. So I did take a look at the YRBS results from 2015, and there's a question on there asking, basically asking the same thing, if, is there an adult at your school, whether it be a teacher or somebody else that you can go to to talk about issues or problems? And 67% of our high schoolers are responding that there are. So it's a little bit higher than the parent perspective there. Yep.
Can we see the OVEAS results at some point?
Yeah, so we just, actually, the window is still open. We left the window open until the end of the year. I believe schools may have their last year's results on their, on their website, but we'll get those pretty quickly. The turnaround is pretty quickly after the window closes.
That'd be great, thanks.
So as I alluded to a bunch of times, we're going to highlight for you some of our district climate results. So you'll see here the overall percent favorable for each of the grade spans, and then the change in those percentages from last year. So those samples of questions, how well do district leaders communicate important information to parents or guardians? How familiar are you with the Public Schools of Brooklands district-wide goals? How consistently are you able to get information when you need it? So you can see there the very positive, I mean, similar to the staff survey, right? We saw these numbers in the 50s, maybe mid 50s for this district climate result, but we did see these very big increases from last year. So the average change there between those three grade spans is 25%, which is very large. We did want to, we didn't highlight a question for you here, but I wanted to verbally highlight the first bullet point there, how well do district leaders communicate important information to parents or guardians? BEEP, 89% of families responded favorably to that question. In K-8, 74% of families are responding favorably, and at the high school, 75% of families are responding favorably to that particular question. So significant positive change in our district climate. And then our additional areas of interest. So we wanted to pull out for you the family engagement results. I know that's a little bit difficult to see if you're looking at the screen. Our family engagement results by question for both the K-8 and the high school, those were a little bit lower in terms of the overall topic. those were a little bit lower in terms of the overall topic areas. And what we saw last year as well, if you see question two, which is in the upper right-hand corner and question three, which is in the bottom left-hand corner, those two are a little bit lower, not even just a little bit, are much lower than the other two questions. So, we saw that last year, too, where there's like two positive questions and two questions where respondents are a little bit more negative. And those two negative questions are what Mr. Chang, I was referencing earlier. So, the first one being, how often do you meet in person with teachers at your child's school? And in order to get a favorable response here, you have to answer weekly or more or monthly. And one of the things that we've been thinking about, you know, should the, should this particular question and, you know, similarly, question number three actually be perceived as low? What's the appropriate scale? What's the expectation? Those are just some questions that we have as we move on to next year and thinking about how we ask these particular questions next year. Same thing at the high school. There's only two questions, but we do have those two distinctions, right? One being 49% favorable, the other being 12 and 23. Just some additional questions that we have, you know, are we actually asking these the right way? So, question number three, in the past year, how often have you attended performances, events and/or activity at BHS? Question two, how involved have you been with parent groups? Should we be asking more like what keeps you from being involved? What are your barriers to involvement? Or are you involved as much as you want or can be? So, those are just some things that we're thinking about as we, you know, move into next year's iteration of the survey.
Yeah, it's interesting. You could read the same question. Thank you. You could read the same question, how often do you meet in person with teachers at your child's school in many ways? Do we really want parents to meet weekly with teachers?
You know, that's exactly what we were saying as we were looking at this result and reporting 15% favorable.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what is the, I mean, what is the appropriate amount? Maybe in kindergarten, because you're taking your kid in, you might meet weekly or more. But by third grade, you don't really, unless there's issues.
Right, I think that's why we're asking the question, right? What's that appropriate scale? What is the expectation?
But they're saying that weekly or monthly is the most, is what it should be?
I don't think they're actually saying that's what it should be. That's just in terms of the way that they report their results, that's what their four to five is on their scale, so.
Are we able to adapt questions, so like for a particular question, a four, a five, a four, or a three would be favorable? Or is it something that's-
Couple things. We are certainly, we have, we can adjust questions and we have adjusted questions. Many of these questions, I'd say probably about half are, that Panorama uses across many districts and probably half are ones that we've generated last year and then repeated this year by working with principals and coordinators and senior staff, that sort of thing. We got some input from teachers as well in developing the questions. Their mechanism for, I mean, we investigated last year as well, their mechanism for, you know, what they consider favorable will always be those top two. And that's why Erin raised the question of, you know, how the answers we, you know, the answer choices we generate really matter quite a bit and we see, you know, limitation in them in the way we've asked this question.
Yep. Is there any way for us to know, like looking at these results, I know you can look at it from school to school and maybe by grade level, but can you, can you understand if there are any, like types of families where we are struggling to engage people more than others?
Yeah, so for the family survey, while it is completely anonymous, the way that we receive the data back from Panorama does allow, as long as there's a certain number of respondents in a particular subgroup, they will break that down for us. So, every principal has access to the online portal and there's actually this subgroup report that they can look at and we can look at that for the district as a whole, too. And then finally, just some next steps. Most of these are the same as we reported on with the staff survey results. So, principals receive their school reports and access to that online platform on April 21st. They are expected to share these results with their school councils either this spring as they develop their new school improvement plans. Principals will also share their results with their staff either before the end of this school year or prior to the beginning of next school year, you know, depending on what makes the most sense for their particular schools and the schedule of their meetings. After the staff get a chance to review the data, it will be shared for the broader school community. So, similar to last year, we'll put all of those school reports, which will have all of the results in aggregate by topic and then all of the results for each individual item or each individual question. It comes in a PDF report. We will put that on the website. And then as we kind of alluded to in our last segment, we will review these questions and answer choices and update the survey for next year's administration as needed.
All right, great. Any further questions? Ms. Charlebsky?
So, which results are the principals sharing with their?
So, they have their school-level results. So, for example, the peer school would have all of the questions for all of the K to eight topic areas and the different breakdown of how that looks.
So, I can think of some changes that happened, occurred, certainly in personnel that may have affected the increase in favorable responses. Is there anything else that you have pinpointed that may be an influence on what brought up some of those scores?
So, I've actually only been here since December 19th, so maybe it's me. No, I don't know, maybe I should turn that over to-
I can give a very concrete example and Ms. Charlebsky could add to it. The beep, for example, you see a significant increase in the communication, in the, sorry, the how effectively do beep leaders and teachers communicate important information? And part of Vicky Millstein's goal has been weekly, very detailed communications across the beep sites of things that are happening, both an explanation of the week ahead, what happened the week past, pictures. And I think that it is likely that that level of her personal goal and that outreach is a part of an increase in terms of a new communication that wasn't happening across, sort of creating some cohesiveness through Vicky's work across the sites in that, in that public way. And that's one example.
All right, well, thank you again, very much.
Thank you.
All right, it is now time for subcommittee and liaison reports and jumping right into finance. Ms. Stramp.
Finance has not met since the last meeting, but I did want to just give the committee and also the public a sense of the work of the next few months as we prepare for discussions around upcoming overrides. And so, what we will be working on is, one, a comparison of the last override budget with actual monies spent, two, a comparison of the projections from the last override for FY 19 and 20, because we, in that last period, we did do five-year projections. So, a comparison of those projections with what we're projecting now. And then finally, updating our projections to also include operating, new operating costs that we anticipate for the new buildings we have. So, both the reopening of the devotion school, the pending renovation and expansion of the high school and also the ninth school.
Great, thank you. Capital improvements, Ms. Charlebsky.
So, capital has been very busy. We had a capital subcommittee meeting on Tuesday at the trailer for the devotion school, which was nice and air-conditioned, actually, so it was fine, where we discussed the classroom projections for next year and the summer maintenance projects that Charlie has lined up to do. I was given just recently by Ms. Coin, there's $400,000 surplus in the energy supply budget, which we transferred, I think, already, if I'm not mistaken, we voted that. But just so that you're aware, those monies are being spent on maintenance projects throughout the schools. There was like a million dollars of maintenance requests, maybe more, more than a million. I can't remember the exact number, but it was in the millions. And Charlie will do whatever magic he can with the $400,000. I can share that with you later on in an email, what I was sent and where it's going to be spent, at which schools, which painting jobs, things like that, replacement of rugs, those are the sorts of things that he would be doing. And there's going to be maintenance of the summer, of the fire alarms and the HVAC systems. There's all sorts of preventative maintenance that he uses the money that we give him to, and the town gives him to work on these items. So, that was basically the meeting. I don't think there was anything else at the meeting. Afterwards, we took a wonderful tour of the devotion school and it was Ms. Scotto, myself and Ms. Bott, Superintendent Bott, and walked through the whole building. Some parts weren't, were less finished than others, but you could certainly imagine classrooms and doorways and gathering spaces, breakout spaces, et cetera, especially in the wing that has the three through five grades. And there's a gorgeous view, actually, from the multipurpose room that I asked the architect while we were up there. Maybe we should leave that all glass so people could look out, but he was afraid they might just cover it up, so he thought it was probably better not to. That's not the plan. There are windows there, but not, not a full glass window. So, that's devotion school. They are on time and on budget. I think that was basically the report at the building commission meeting, which there's a couple of change orders. As with any project, there are things that need to be changed, things that weren't coordinated well. I have signed them. You guys won't be getting those now, I think, during the year. Now, I'm going to be signing them all the time, so people won't get them. Okay? If anybody would like-
Signature policy.
Huh? Right. Right, right. Well, it's an awful responsibility, so if anybody wants to take a look at it, they're welcome to. I'm certainly willing to share in that way. Let me just check and see if there's any other school projects. There's elevator projects going on at the Tappan Street Gym. The pool repairs and the deck are finished along with the locker room. So, at the ninth school, there was a peer review of the landscape and the parking area and my understanding is that that is finished or will be finished by the end of the month, basically. And our legal teams are still looking at some of the other issues around the ninth school. On a very bright note, at the high school, we had nine proposals from different architectural firms for the project. Today, Ms. Dikoff and I sat as a committee of seven together with, well, there was a committee of six, unfortunately. Mr. Pollock wasn't there. And we chose five firms to interview. These are public interviews, so if anybody's interested just to see how the process works, please come. At this point, there's a very tentative date of July 12th, the, Ms. Dikoff is not-
12?
12, I hope. It's very tentative. So, we're working on, we're trying to get both the superintendent, the problem with the sixth was that the superintendent and the headmaster can't be there. So, but that's to be determined, the date. We will get that to you for sure. The firms that were selected were Perkins and Eastman, Perkins and Will, I'm sorry, I don't have all these names committed to memory, William Ron Associates, Perkins Eastman, Perkins and Will, and those three, HMFH and L Street in combination with DLR. So, those are the interviews. There will also be a, we've requested services of an owner's project manager. That's someone to do basically what Ray and Tony have done for most of our projects, but right now there's overwhelming need and they can't do that for this project. So, the cut-down session will be on June 20, in June, and interviews on June 28th, excuse me, will be the, will get the, you know, do the committee of seven once more and then possibly have interviews, I think we will, with the people who are applying for that. Is there anything that I've missed? Yes?
I just have a question. When do we think we'll have an OPM onboard?
I think that, for the high school, that can happen as soon as we decide and they negotiate the contract. So, assuming if we do the interviews, I'm sorry, I don't-
We're picking the list on July 6th.
Okay.
That's what that meeting was, that we were going to-
Okay, so then, so by July 6th, we'll know who our most favorable person is. We will, they'll negotiate a contract and they can begin immediately.
Well, we were going to try to interview people on the 13th.
Oh, we're cutting down on the 6th is what you're saying? Okay, so the-
Okay.
Interviews, okay. So, within the first two weeks of July, let's put it that way. And one of the things that you may be interested in, one of the questions that we're going to be asking of each of the firms is their experience with working with and around the MBTA and how, you know, familiar they are with that sort of issue. We felt that that was a critical piece in all of this. But please come. They will start at four o'clock in the afternoon, these interviews, and go on probably. And, you know, we can take, you know, some comments from you, too, in terms of the choices. There's three school committee representatives, so you can talk to us and let us know your thoughts. The more, the merrier.
I would just like to ask the committee, so as Ms. Charlebsky knows, I've been pushing fairly hard to have these happen earlier rather than later. And now that they are, we can, the committee of seven has identified a list of people to interview, it's June 15th. Theoretically, two weeks is plenty of time for them to put together what they need to put together. So, we were aiming for the week of the 26th. Given the Fourth of July holiday, given various schedules, it just, it's gotten pushed back two more weeks from that. And so, I was trying to see if I could stay firm on the last week of June, just so that we don't lose two more weeks and start, if we don't start interviews until the 12th, I worry that if we then need another meeting, because there are going to be five interviews, we may or may not be able to decide in that meeting. We're going to be fried to be able to decide in that meeting. We're then going to need another meeting after that. And so, then we're getting into kind of the end of July to try to decide and that's, you know, August is obviously a tough time and then September is the start of school. So, I guess I would more trying to push this towards the end of June. I was, had very limited success, if any, probably.
You did a valiant job.
Apparently zero. When I left, you pushed it back two more weeks.
No, one week, from the 6th to the 12th.
No, no, the 28th.
Yeah, this is true.
So, it got back two weeks after I left, so.
I think there's one piece that's not necessarily true in what you're saying from my experience. Now, we haven't interviewed five. You've usually done three or four.
Right.
Usually by the end of the year- Usually by the end of the evening, it's pretty clear who your most favorable person is in this process.
I was led to believe by our project manager that that may or may not be true with five complicated proposals and very, very good firms, that we might be fried, we might be tired, we might need another meeting. If it's 8:00 PM and we're, you know, we've just sat through five presentations, that may or may not be true, so.
Maybe the way to do that is to set up a tentative second meeting right afterwards.
That's fine. It's not something this whole committee needs to decide. I just, I, I'm wondering if this is just-
What are you asking?
I'm asking, if this is just me, I will give it up, and I will stop pushing so hard. If it is not just me, then I need to know that, so that Helen and I together can push harder, from the will of the school committee, whom we are representing, to try to have this happen in the June timeframe, rather than, kind of late June timeframe, rather than late July timeframe, is what I was sort of hearing. So I'd like to get some guidance from the committee.
My two cents is the sooner the better, but, you know, you have to, you have the constraints that you have, I suppose. But pushing to, to be faster, I think, is not a bad thing.
Okay. Anyone else?
Do you know?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just, how many people are in schools? The very last two weeks of June are just really hectic times for school administrators and school personnel. So I don't know if there are any school personnel on there.
No, it's only, it's three school committee members, three building commissioners, one Sluckman, and then basically Andrew, Mary Ellen, Matt, but there aren't, but at no point, this is all after school ends. Just so you know, the earliest version that I was pushing for was the week after school ends, which, again, I had limited success on.
Between vacations, people's schedules, and other things, it just-
I just need guidance from the committee as to whether we should be pushing a little harder.
I don't think, you can push.
Please, please push away.
Okay.
All right. Curriculum, Ms. Scotto.
Curriculum has been quite as busy as capital this week. I'm going to start out by talking about the curriculum meeting this morning, and then I'm going to talk about the rest of the school improvement meetings, of which there have been, well, three, but basically four schools. The curriculum meeting this morning began with a look at a video or a slide presentation about Makerspaces in Brookline that was first seen at the ECS meeting. And Makerspaces are thriving in a number of places. Many good things are going on. Some of us saw the Da Vinci project that was done at Heath School with really innovative designs based on Da Vinci's. They'd started out at the Science Museum, was looking at the work that had been done there. That particular video included site visits to a variety of places that people had made. New View, which is a private school, I think in Cambridge, that kids go to for part of the year. They can sort of opt out for a month or two and go there. Concord Carlisle, which has some things having to do with writing and math that they, they do in a sort of Makerspace area. Design 39 in San Diego. So people have visited Makerspaces in a variety of places, and we are working in Brookline to hope that we can find things in every school. We also spent part of the meeting talking about sports contracts. There are contracts that students can have at the high school, which allow them to opt out of their, their phys ed requirement, two, amounting to two days a week. And we are looking, we are thinking about whether or not they should be, I don't mean we, the curriculum committee, but the, the school system, whether they should be eliminated. We are one of the few school systems that allows this. We had a, a graphic that showed there are only three or four school systems that are currently allowing this. The thought is that the phys ed curriculum is not, as it, as you might envision it in what I'll call the old days, where it was gym, you played basketball, you did various and sundry things that were fun, but the curriculum today is more about health education, things that help students, or physical fitness kinds of things, that are for lifelong learning about what you do about your body. There's a list of courses you can take, some of which look fascinating, one about how do you improve your brain performance, for example, that's considered a phys ed course. So when students opt out, they are not getting the same kind of education around health and physical fitness that they would have if they continued to do this. Sports teams also opt out, but that's a bigger problem, because so many, so many kids are involved in that. There are about 50 kids, kids a semester, who are involved in the school contract piece. We are going to continue to talk about it and look at it because, and, and discuss it at the school committee. We discovered this morning that nobody was sure about whether the school committee had any say in it, because we don't know if it's a policy in the policy manual. And so, so we have to do some research on that. Then we talked a bit about our goals for next year, but you'll hear about that at the workshop, so I'm not going to go into that today. But that was the last curriculum meeting for the year. Now, to go back to yesterday evening, we went to the Runkel School, some members of the curriculum committee and others. Ms. Fetterspiel, for example, has come to all of them. We are very happy to have her. And it's, the, the meetings that we went to were the end-of-the-year meetings for these groups, which is a little different than going to some of the others. But they, they talked about the school improvement plan. And at Runkel, a draft has been made of the school improvement plan, but the new principal will come in and have some input in it. And the school improvement plans have undergone, I would say, a sea change this year. They are, and I think that's due to the administration, the new administration that's here, instead of being what is a long, long list of goals that people are going to have, they're focusing on math, they're focusing on literacy, they're focusing on equity. And the goals will be there, and they'll be more concise, and, and it seemed to be a, a good idea. Conversation drifted at that point at Runkel. We talked about the foundations program that many teachers are excited about. We talked about the fact that the math curriculum is in transition, and some conversation about Jo Bowler, who certainly some teachers have had professional development with, she's visited Brookline a couple of times, working, I think, in part through the ECS program. Just a general conversation with parents and teachers about what is happening, what's working, and what's not. This morning, we all got up very, very early to go to a 7:00 meeting at Lower Devotion, and Ms. Stram was there with us as well. You were there as a parent and a school committee member, so it was, it was very nice to have you. And again, it was this end-of-the-year meeting, this feeling that, what have we accomplished this year? And in particular, they talked, Dave and Jen talked about successes, making Lower Devo, and this was actually a whole Devo meeting, so it moved to different, different areas, but making Lower Devo feel like home. And Dave talked about the fact that there had been a great deal of support from town staff, the police department, Mary Murphy. And Jen talked about the fact that people in the community say, "Well, why don't we have our ninth school here?" She said, and I think this is absolutely true, when you look at it, you get what she's talking about, "This is sustainable. It's sustainable because we're going to be there for two years." It is certainly not an ideal space for school. Things are constrained, but the teachers are doing a beautiful job, using the spaces that are available in very, very creative ways. They talked about the fact that day-to-day, the trend, it takes more time to transition, so it digs into how much time you actually have to teach. The floors divide up the grades, so there's not much chance for cross-grade interaction. They also talked very persuasively about missing the K-8 model, that when you have a K-8 model, it's a different kind of community, because, first of all, the kids in the upper grades can go back and visit with a teacher that they have liked. There are lots and lots of adults in that school giving support. And the children in the lower grades can look at what the upper grade kids are doing and think about what they might be doing at that point. There's, there's a very good effect of this. They talked about some of the things they were going to do next year. And in Upper Devo, I'm trying to think, because I have so many notes, I can't tell what I, what I really was thinking, but they said there'd been a very smooth addition of the two new grades this year. There are fewer bus issues, there are fewer building kinks, it was difficult to hear in some of the rooms last year, but they've gotten carpeting and soundboards that make it much better. They also missed being part of a K-8 school. There are no book buddies. The eighth grade always worked with the younger kids. Portfolio Day, they could go down to their younger classrooms and show, classrooms that they were in when they were younger, and throw things, show things to the teachers. And parents talked about being torn between two schools, because one kid would be at one school, one kid would be at the other. It was really, because we know that there are middle schools and elementary schools all over the place, and it's, but what they were doing is saying, "These are the things we value about a K-8 system, and these are the things we miss, and these are the things we want to go back to." There was a lot of conversation there about the literacy collaborus, collaborative, and just in general, the good work that was being done. People were very supportive of it. They were working with the coaches, they liked the coaches, and were very happy with it. We then went tonight to a meeting downstairs with the two new principals, Pierce and Lawrence. And it was a very interesting meeting, because Chris at Pierce started to talk about the kinds of things that she was doing. And she said, "You know, Pierce is a big school, and in many ways, is operating like a small school. And there are things that need to happen that will make it more efficient." She talked about the fact that, if you can see, you need to consider it as a campus, because there are three different buildings. She talked about putting a kiosk up at the front where kids could check in in the morning, so there was no longer this big wait at the office. She had, she talked about creating a logo, putting up some signs, and I was reminded of Louise Thompson, who was here in the 1970s, who was the deputy superintendent, and she, there were lots and lots of meetings about creating classroom cultures, creating system cultures, how you did that. And some of the things that she was, that Chris was saying, brought that back, how important it is to create, in part, when you create community, you create culture, and some of that is done by having things that represent your school, having not only, not only a vision that represents the school, but you have a slogan, you can have all kinds of things like that. She has been doing things about, I love this, she was cleaning out the basement of the historic building. They need more storage space. So she's gotten, getting a lot of the stuff out of there that's in there that's, no one is using anymore. She talked about having an artist in residence next year, who will do some mural painting. It's the same artist who worked at Driscoll School, and if you go by Driscoll, you'll see the mural on the side of the building. We, we talked a little bit about what had been, I have to, what had been, what else she was working on, and she, equity was a big issue this year. One thing she did was have everybody read All American Boys, everybody being all the adults in the building. All American Boys is a YA novel, and it brings up issues around equity, around race, and that was very effective for her school. She started the first-ever student council in grade seventh and eight. Next year, they will move to sixth. When we asked her what had been, what had been the hardest thing this year, she said, "Well, it's a, it's, it's, there is a large workload, it is a big school, and you are out a lot, and you're working long days." There were some also comments about that by Warren, that there were things that would make life easier, and some of those things had to do with getting, getting, getting various forms and documents up on a website that the staff could go right into, that you could use, and you could send something out that would go to everybody in your staff. He had some, I think, some very good ideas, which I think he's talked to you about. And he said that if you have all of this online, it makes it so much easier to get the message out that you want. He say, called Brookline an email system. Everybody emails everything to everybody else, so that this way, you could send out one thing that would reach everybody, and it would be the responsibility of the person on the receiving end to check to see what had been posted. We talked about the evaluation model, and how that was working, and he felt that that was working very well, that what you had to do, what was important about the evaluation model, was really communicating with the teachers and talking about what it was they could improve, and how they could do that, of a sort of a very straightforward combination, a conversation. So it, it was a very, very good meeting, and I think that we will miss him when he leaves, and Chris certainly seems to be doing good work at Pierce. So that was productive. What I think the committee has decided is that this way of doing school improvement plans really is, for us, more productive than the model we used to use, because you get a chance to talk with parents, you get a chance to talk with teachers, you are in the school, you, you, it makes it a more comprehensive conversation than just having the principal come and present some certain highlights. Not that that wasn't good, but I think we're ready to move on to this next model. So I wondered if people had questions? Or comments? Yes?
Thank you. I've been trying to, so thank you for piloting this, this new incarnation. Just one quick observation, which is that throughout, as we go through the year, we always hear comments about the K-8 structure and why there's an advantage to it, but then it comes time to sort of summarize all the public presentation on really, why are we building a ninth K-8 school? And then we kind of have to struggle to come up with specific examples, and you listed five or six of them tonight. So I'm wondering if there's a way, while it's all fresh in our minds, either for you, or maybe ask the principals to do anything, but if they could sort of say, "Our principals are telling us," or "Our parents are telling us," here are, our teachers are telling us, here are two, three, four examples of, like, it's fine for a few years, and also, they miss, wouldn't want this to become permanent, because I think there are a lot of people in town who are saying, "Oh, well, we've, now we have a school, let's just go to a school model." They don't have fit in one building anyway, but people forget that. Anyway, I think we just have to keep these front and center, which is, "It's great for two years, and we need to go back to K-8." So is there any way to capture those specific examples of seeing each other's work, the buddies, the portfolio, the eighth grade, I mean, just all those things you mentioned, Barbara?
Teachers knowing you for many years.
Teachers know, you're time, right. I mean, I think we all, the example of the seventh grader who's struggling, goes back to their second grade teacher, and, you know, goes into their room, you know, in, anyway. So I, if we can do that, that would be incredible, and then we can pull it out when we need it.
All right. Thank you very much. Government relations, Ms. Charlofsky.
There's a lot, and nothing I'm going to report. A lot in the sense of, nobody knows what our, what the state budget will be in the end for us. Nobody knows what the federal budget- Nobody knows what the federal budget. I just got the email from you about Medicaid and how that might be cut, and that will have an effect on our budget. I think we just go with our budget and hope and pray because it's not clear what's happening anywhere at this point.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah. I mean, it's the only one we can have because we know what we're going to do, and it's not clear what everybody else is going to do. I think that's the only legislative thing, unless anybody else has something to report. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Policy, Mr. Chang.
Policy met on Monday, and continuing our work on the wellness policy, which I discussed last time. So not a lot of new development, and the next step will be circulating the wellness policy again with the principals, as well as the PTO chair, and, you know, obviously gaining feedback from that process. Hopefully, we could bring something to the committee in September for first reading.
All right. Great. Additional liaisons and updates? Anyone? Ms. Scotto.
I think this year is the only year I've had two updates from the Council on Aging. But I'm actually going to give just another quick one. John Hodgman was at the Council on Aging the other day, and he was talking about the Brookline Community Foundation Scholarship Fund. And I thought it was worth mentioning here, though I think people do know about it. But I don't know if you looked at the scholarship list that you got from Brookline High. It was an enormous number of pages. Many, many kids, 240, something like that, got scholarships. Those scholarships generally have criteria tied to them. That is to say, there's a scholarship, for example, for twins. This year, there were two sets of twins, so they got scholarships. There's one scholarship for somebody who does this, that, or the other, and is going to the University of Michigan. I mean, he pointed out a lot of them. There are very specific criteria for the scholarships. The scholarship that they have started at the Brookline Community Foundation is a needs-based scholarship. There are lots of kids who just simply need the money to go to school. And it may be for vocational education, for four-year college, for community college, whatever works for the kids. There was, there was a young man there who spoke with him, and I don't recall his name, but he was a young man who was raised with parents who had worked all their lives in restaurants. They were cooks, they were washing dishes and so forth, didn't have a lot of money. He got a full scholarship to Boston University. And the question may be then, why is he getting another scholarship here? Well, the Boston University scholarship covers tuition, room, and board. But there are other costs. There are costs for books, there are costs, various and sundry fees you have to pay. And this, these scholarships are not always large, but they cover sometimes other costs that kids don't have, the, 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 the family income is not such that they can do that. This scholarship fund has been heavily endowed. It lists on here, for example, that the country club, the country club has pledged $100,000.
Every year?
I believe that was his, no, no, because they're setting up an endowment. Not every year. That would be nice. The Brookline Bank has pledged $100,000. Bo Winnaker and the Rotary Club of Brookline have pledged $50,000, and there are others. So this is getting good press. I don't know if you remember, at one point, that we got something in our tax bill that asked for contributions to the scholarship fund. But the Board of Selectmen has not passed that. So I'm going to do a little lobbying because it seems to me that putting it in the tax bills where it goes to everybody, you can send, it's not that you're charged, it's just a flyer that is in there saying, if you'd like to contribute to this fund, do it. So if you're interested in doing that, put a little pressure on the Board of Selectmen and see if you can help out there.
Can I ask a question? So at some point in finance, I think we should look at the scholarships. I think you were planning on doing that. I think I'd asked you when you first came, and I said, it doesn't have to be the first thing, but this is already a couple of years in. So it would be nice to look and see, because you have nothing on your plate right now, Ms. Dunne. Kidding. But I do think, I think we do give out, or we used to give out about a half million dollars in scholarships a year. It's a large amount. And there's scholarships that date back to the 30s, I mean, 1930s, you know? And so I think it'd be important for us to take a look at it, see what it's earning, see what's happening with it. Are there scholarships that are never given up because it's so restricted? Do we get back to those families and say, look at, would you like to expand? You know, those sorts of things. And with this one, do we know how much they gave out this year?
I don't know. No. He may have said it, but...
So maybe that could be part of it too, so that we get a better understanding of what students are able to access and what's happening with it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other liaisons or updates? Liaison reports or updates? All right. Seeing none.
You may be chairperson.
Well, we do have need for an executive session. So I will move to enter into executive session for purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and potential litigation with the Brookline Educators Union, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the school committee's bargaining and litigation position. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Ms. Coyne, will you poll the committee?
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Ms. Scotto?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiner, Oldham?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiner?
Yes.
Yes, I'm finishing 41 minutes early.
We're not done yet. And the school committee will not reconvene in open session at the end of the executive session.